I'm here to talk to you tonight as the commanding officer, but I'm also here tonight to talk to you.
As a husband, as a father, and as your neighbor in Laurel Bay. We've got a number of commanders and officers here, and I'm glad that they're here tonight, but quite honestly, tonight is about you. It's an opportunity for me to talk to you, to provide you information, and it's also an opportunity for me to listen to you. To me to hear your questions or your concerns. The topic we're going to talk about tonight, quite honestly, is one of the most concerning topics that a family can face. And with that comes anxiety and some fears. So my purpose tonight is to give you information to alleviate your concerns. To give you information to understand what it is that we're talking about. So that's really my purpose tonight and what my intent is for all. You're going to ask you some questions tonight that, quite honestly, I'm not going to handle any of them. And I'm going to tell you, but I don't have all the answers. But I'll tell you what I do, okay? That's my problem here. So I want to, before I get started here, I want to kind of frame the evening for everybody so we all kind of understand how we're going to get through this evening tonight. So first of all, combat cameras in the back, and I have them documenting for us so that we can focus on the verbal communication between one another, okay? So I want to make you aware of that. I'm getting louder if it sounds great. Everybody okay? All right. And I want to proceed as follows. Kind of break this into thirds for the evening. I'm going to spend a little bit of time here initially giving you a baseline of information, me talking to you. And then I'm going to go to, you know, we have a website up, and the website is right there. We have a website, and you've been able to provide some questions to a phone line or to the website, or to an email. And I've got those questions here tonight, and it's my intent to spend a little bit of time answering those questions because I think response to those questions will be a good start to answering questions that you may have come here tonight, or maybe you may have already submitted, and I'm going to answer those now. And then the third part of this is I'm going to go to a question and answer. And I'll have a Marine on the right side here and a Marine on the left side with a handheld microphone. And there's an opportunity for you to come up and ask your question. And I'll start on one side, and I'll alternate to the other side, and I'll go back and forth to give you an opportunity to have your questions answered tonight. I do ask for two things for the question and answer period. If you're not a Laurel Bay resident and you're here tonight, I ask that you give priority to residents of Laurel Bay. That's my target audience. I want to talk to the families that live in Laurel Bay. And if you ask a question, and I encourage you to ask me a question. But if you ask a question, please try to be succinct so that I can get to as many questions as are available, okay? It's a school night. I realize that for many of us, it's a school night for our kids, and you may have a babysitter at home. You may have homework that you need to go assist with, and I understand that. So let's just say at 2:30, at 8:30 PM tonight, we're going to call it quick. I'm going to stick around, and I'll stick around until you may or not be able to ask me a question if you desire to stick around. I'll do that. But for the group here, we'll just say 2030, 8:30 PM, couple hours, I think. I had a pot of water before we came in here. I think all of us would probably be ready to go. And I have those. Here are, for the Marines and sailors, there's heads in the back. For our families, there's bathrooms, and for that matter, if you have somewhere to go tonight and you can't stay, it's absolutely okay for you to get up and head out. If you've got to go back to the babysitter, or you've got another requirement, it's okay. Please get up and to head out, okay? So I want to encourage you to feel free to go and be comfortable. And there's another town hall tomorrow evening. If you desire to come back tomorrow evening and ask your question, then I'm doing the same thing tomorrow night, not knowing how many people will be able to make it on one evening before the next. And then finally, I've asked Marines to be at the hatches as you head out. They've got three by five carts. If you even get to ask your question tonight that I can respond to, you can either go and put it on the email, or you can write it on that three by five cart, and I will give you a response to your question. Please give me your name and contact information so that I can get back to you. But that's another avenue of which I can get a question from you and answer. So the email is up here. I want to highlight again, the email address is available, and the website that we've put up is a plethora of information. The information I have is on that website. Okay, so reframing again. I'm going to give you some baseline information. I'm going to talk to you for a few minutes. Then I'm going to answer questions that have already come in and give you responses because I think a large majority are questions you might have. And then I'll go to a question and answer period for the final third and talk, okay? So that's the process here. Okay, so where are we and where are we going? During 2015, two families came out with a concern that their child had cancer, and they were concerned that it was related to living in Laurel Bay. The families were not located in Laurel Bay. They were outside of, or excuse me, the families are not in Buc- they were outside of the area. So we reached out to them, and through my chain of command, the Marine Corps met with them to understand their concerns and to also make sure they were getting medical help. So we met with them and connected with them and made sure they were connected with a medical provider. Now I have no reliable information for their concerns that their child has cancer and the fact that they live in Laurel Bay. But I acted on their concerns. Because we had Marine families that were concerned, we took some steps, and I'm going to tell you what those are. Their particular concerns are focused around underground storage tanks. So in the 50s, our houses, the old K Part houses, the legacy homes in Laurel Bay were heated by oil. And there were underground storage tanks that were put in the ground as the source for the oil to heat the homes. In 1980, we transitioned from heating with oil to geothermal heating, and that ended the use of heating oil. And then in 2007, we started a process to remove the tanks. And in September of 2015, we completed the removal of 1,251 known tanks in Laurel Bay. So all known tanks have been removed since 2015. We used ground penetrating radar, we used metal detectors, we used sharp probes to go into the ground to ensure there's no physical object present. And then once we removed the tanks, we tested the soil. After we tested the soil, we tested the water. And we've been testing now soil gas, known as vapor intrusion. We've gone beyond EPA required protocols to start that test to determine if there is any possible pathway to answer the questions that came from the concerned families. So I initiated a study through the Navy Marine Corps Public Health Center. A study to answer the question of the families and alleviate their concerns or answer their concerns. That study is ongoing. That study is data intensive, and it requires analysis by experts that are sifting through the data. And that process is ongoing right now. So those are the facts. And let me go back here for a second. So based on the concerns of two families, we initiated a study. We focused on the care for the families. And then I made a promise to them, and I make a promise to you, I make a promise to my family in Laurel Bay, to the safety of your families and to mine. I promised you that I have acted. I will act, and I give a lot of information that gives me some answers that I would take the appropriate step, okay? That's my promise to you. Okay, so that's the baseline of information. Let me go to some questions here, and just appreciate your patience. I'll go through a number of questions, and then we'll go to the Q and A period. Is the, one of the questions that came in was, why weren't the families called sooner? Quite simply, I don't want to cause fear and anxiety as it currently right now to this point in the year. I have no reliable information that gives me a link between the concerns of the two families that initiated this study and the fact that they lived in Laurel Bay, and no information that indicates exposure factors. But I acted on the concern of those families and initiated the study to determine that, to give them that. I do not want to cause anxiety or worry when I did not know if I had any. But I assure you that when I have a lot of information, I will act. Have all the tanks been removed? I explained a process to you just a few minutes ago. All of them, 1,250 tanks, have been removed. You did that, you mean 2,000 or 700? 2,000 if all the tanks have been removed. We verified that and I've indicated through ground penetrating radar, metal detectors, any probes for observation of any physical structures in the ground. Were there tanks in Freedom Sound? The process I've talked to you about were the C wells and the D hubs in the 50s during that period. Freedom Sound is now a district in the neighborhood of Laurel Bay. So there are no tanks used in Freedom Sound. That's a great question. What is the explanation for the number of children slash adults from one place having cancer? The question here, the way it's asked, is making an assumption that there is a large number. The study that I've initiated with the Navy Marine Corps Public Health Study has two parts. Epidemiology and environmental element to it. So the study will tell us if we have a number of children or adults that have cancer from one place. We don't know that. The study is looking to determine that. We had a concern from two families. We acted on that concern, and I'm using the methods of which to determine if there's any that have any concerns. And following the process. Is the water safe or should families be using bottled water for consumption purposes? That's a really good question. It's important for all of you to know that you can be confident in your drinking water, the pot of water. All of the water from Buc- which includes Laurel Bay, Air Station, all of our water comes from Buc- Jaster Water Sewer Building. It is piped in from places like the Savannah River, and it comes to us for our drinking, showering, watering our grasses when we're able to water our grasses. I drink my water under my sap, my home, my wife, my children, my black lab. Your water is safe. It is regulated by, it's regulated by Buc- Jaster Water Sewer Building. They test it regularly, and you can be confident in your water. No water that we drink, the pot of water, is groundwater or in Buc- Jaster, okay? Okay, when will the study be completed and released? That's getting to the Navy Marine Corps Public Health Center study that I initiated. I don't have an answer for that, and here's why. As I said earlier, the two parts of this study, epidemiology and environmental. The study is data intensive, and it takes analysis by the medical specialists and by the environmental specialists to go through the data. And there's a large amount of data for them to go through. But here's the important part for me, is that it's accurate. I want them to take the time they need to be accurate. Because the information I want back is information that I can act on, and I want to be sure about it. So I would call that study, you've entered it, but not time. I want it as fast as I can get it, just like you, because we're laying in the same place. But we acted on the concern of the family. We initiated a study to understand if there was a link between their concern and where they're at. And that's the process we're going down. And as I said, the specialists are looking at it. The best people together organizing to do these types of things are doing that right now. Should the results come back positive for contamination? Is there a plan in place for relocation? The study is not going right now. I don't have the results back. But when I get the results back, I will promise you this. I will do the right thing. I will do what's necessary based on the results. I don't have a link right now. If there's any indication, I will pursue it. But when I get information that's actionable and tells me I need to act, I will absolutely act. And here's why I want to be careful about that. How many of you were here for Hurricane Matthew? A large majority did. I hope my actions here during Hurricane Matthew give you some confidence. When I determined that there was a threat to us and our families, I took the action necessary to protect you, and I'll do it again. And it gets really simple for me. I'll be honest with you, it's really simple to make that decision. Because I'm guided by my core values. I encourage you to do that. If I have information in the papers that I need to protect me, I will. And I'll do that. At the moment, I don't have the information that indicates that we have actionable requirement at this point other than what we're doing, which is study it and determine whether or not the concerns of these families can be linked to what they believe in. Are we able to break our lease? I've been in contact with the Navy Command to head oversight for our public private venture, our Halloween area. And they're looking into the options available to our Marines that they receive and that they find the choice. So I'm asking the questions of the people that have oversight. Personally, for me, I think making that choice right now would be pretty sure. I live in Laurel Bay. Those of my wife and my children, I live in Laurel Bay. And I am absolutely comfortable staying where I am. I, right now, have no reliable information that gives me an action that indicates that I need to move out of my house. But I'm talking to the people that have oversight to be able to answer that question. What can we do if our children get sick? And that's really simple too. It's a good question. Because my answer today is the same answer I would have given you two weeks ago, or I'll give you two weeks from now. If your children are going to get sick, whatever the symptom might be, talk to your medical provider. Call your medical provider and get the best information we can on should you bring them in or... Is that very clear? Talk to the medical board if you have a concern. It's absolutely within your purview to do that. But I would say that for any type of situation. Can you guarantee my house is safe? I will never put a family into a house that is not safe. For whatever, any structural or otherwise. For Hurricane Matthew to get trees falling a couple houses in Laurel Bay. We didn't put those families back in the house. We knew those families were not at home until we began the period. I'm never going to put a family into a house that I bring them in. We're not at that point. Initiated a study to determine an answer, and I don't have any reliable information at this point that indicates there is a concern for our families. And I want to alleviate any anxiety. Is there a cancer cluster? I've initiated a study to determine the question of what do we have, okay? When you use the word cluster, it has a very specific meaning. It was defined by the Center of Disease Control. We're not at that point. We're at the study point. And the specialist, epidemiologist, and environmental specialist will help our families with that question. But right now, we don't have that information to make that kind of statement. When will the air in my house be tested? We're continuing to sample. As I said, we've gone up and beyond EPA requirements. As we're going to vapor treatment testing or soil gas testing. And we've scheduled the best houses. Now off the top of my head, I have an answer to that question. Mr. Wilson here? Dave, can you step in for a second? Do I need to shut down?
I think I'm good. A question about testing air in houses. It's probably worthwhile, if I take a step back a little bit, and talk about the whole process that we went through, starting from tank pull to the vapor intrusion testing. We'll start by telling you that pulling tanks, doing the soil samples that we did, doing the groundwater samples that we did, doing the vapor intrusion testing that we have done and that we will continue to do. Everything we've done to date, there's no EPA regulation that says we have to do those things. And we're doing them out of caution so that we can determine from the concerns that the two families brought to us. We're doing these things so we can find out if there is a linkage to what they're experiencing to Laurel Bay. So when we started pulling tanks, the tanks for residential heat are not governed by any regulatory laws, rules, or regulations by the EPA. We're by the state's schedule. So there really was not a requirement for us to do that. But again, out of caution, and out of just, it meant environmentally the right thing to do, we started pulling these tanks. We sat down with DEHAC, that's the Department of Health and Environmental Control. They are the watchdog that governs all the state's schedule. It enforces all the EPA rules and regulations. So we sat down with them before we started pulling tanks and developed the standard that we would use for these tanks. Now the way we do that is it mirrors what would be required by law for an industrial type tank that you might find at a gas station. So what we're doing at your house is the same as what would happen at a gas station if those tanks were doing. So it's that same level scrutiny, that same level of examination. For the fourth tank, we take the soil sample at the place where the tank, you know, came out of. That soil sample went to a lab. The results went up to DEHAC. They looked at those results and then told us if the soil sample required any further action. If it hit a particular threshold, then we had to take further actions. If it was below that threshold, no further action was required. The follow-on actions that were required at that point were to install a well so that we could reach down to the groundwater table, take a sample of the groundwater, and then that groundwater sample was examined, it labbed just as the soil sample was. Results went to DEHAC, and they came back and told us whether or not we needed to do follow-on or long-term monitoring at that particular place for the water table. If it did, then that well, we preferred that to a permanent well, and we continue monitoring it. And what we're looking for in the monitoring is to make sure that the contamination level is disseminating because these particular types of petroleum-based products, they disseminate themselves over time. And so we're looking to see that that was occurring, and we're also looking to see at the groundwater table if that area of contamination was moving around at all. So we continue to monitor that. We've done those. We have a very small number of tanks, excuse me, of wells that we still need to put in the ground. Those wells will be done by March, and so we're still in the tactical action phase at that point. In terms of vapor intrusion, you know, that's a process that we went through for every tank. Check the soil, check the groundwater, and then determine if we have to do any long-term groundwater monitoring. So that's standard for all, 1,200 big one of those tanks. We also determined, actually before these families, before the issue with these families came up, we determined that we wanted to go to the next step, which is to do what's called vapor intrusion sampling. And there's some posters out in the employers who're coming in. I know a lot of y'all looked at those, and a lot of y'all have seen some of the information we've put out about that. And when we're done here, we'd be happy to talk to you more about that at the front. But there is an issue of phenomenon called vapor intrusion, and that occurs if there's enough contamination in the groundwater that as it dissipates, those vapors migrate to the soil and come up. And our concern is whether or not there's enough concentration that may occur under a house if there are any cracks in the foundation that may come up into the house. And so we're just looking for the potential for that. It's all based on, again, concentrations, and then how much of those vapors are actually coming up through the soil. So we started testing those houses in a very deliberate way to look, first of all, at some areas where we knew that there was going to be new houses built. So we tested some houses, house sites that the AMCC is going to plan to build new houses on. We also looked at some of the houses that had been vacated, just to build some of our data points. But then we had a certain block of houses, 34 to the exact, where our records indicated that there was a tank under a portion of the house. And that being the case, it was our determination or our expectation with the tank being under a portion of the house, like somewhere under the front porch, somewhere on the back porch, could have been under the shed, it could have been under, call it driveway, it could have been under an add-on room that was put on after the initial house. So we went to those houses thinking that if there had been a tank at that point, then that would be the point of highest concentration. And so that would be an area that the, where the house, where it may have the highest potential for this vapor intrusion. So we went to those houses, did that sampling, and some of you probably were involved in that for, you know, last summer during the June-July time frame. Of the 34 houses that we tested, two of them, we're going to go back, or we have gone back, to take a second sample from those houses. 32 of 34 require no further action to be done. Two of them require us to go and take the next sample. I probably need to explain more why we will go back and take the next sample. That vapor intrusion is a very iterative process. The way you start that is to, first, to learn what the tank was, take a sample there, and check those readings. If you have any compound that is above a prescribed screening level, then you move a little bit closer to the house. The idea being that you want to check where the original source was and make sure of the levels of soil gas there, and then rule out as you get closer and plug into the house. So we followed that protocol, the samples of those two particular houses. We took the samples and just followed the normal protocol. We need to go back and test and take additional samples of those houses. I know that there's, benzene has been, is a point of a lot of concern. You know, that's the product, that the compound seems to be what people are most worried about right now. None of the houses we tested have been at above those screening levels. So the two houses that we're going back to had that weight that we need to go back and test them. So benzene has not been, has not exceeded the screening level for any benzene. So benzene has not exceeded the screening level for any benzene. Now, the next phase of sampling that we do, we did those first 34, again, based on the location of the tank. The next ones that we do are based on the groundwater sampling. Even though the tank pulls and this vapor intrusion sampling, even though we're not required by EPA to do that, we are following the guidelines and procedures that EPA suggests. So one of those procedures says that if you have groundwater sample that is above a threshold, that might be the space or a house where there's a potential for vapor intrusion. So of the data that we have all been through all of our sampling to date, we have looked through all that data and found those houses that meet that threshold. So those are the next ones that we're going to go do. We will start those houses, the date hasn't been determined yet, but it will be in the world in the near future, I'd say in just a number of months. Well, I can point to that, it's not just us, the air station, that's making that determination. We work that routine that is air station environmental experts. We also work that in coordination with the Department of Health and Environmental Control, DEHAC, and we work that through the naval facilities. So three organizations with subject matter experts set down the work, do this data, and figure out which houses are the next ones to be tested. So again, we've done 73 to date. We have more scheduled to be done at the end of the discussion tonight. If you want to know if your house is on that list, come down and ask us. We have that list with us, and we tell you if you're on that next list to have vapor intrusion tested.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And as I have in the past, if we choose to sample at your residence, you'll be notified by, I promise you, notification, you're the most surprised to see. Okay, those are the questions that have come in through our call line and through our email section. So now, I want to move into the third portion of this, which is question and answer opportunities for you. So if you have a question and you'd like to ask a question, we're going to have the microphones here, right? Where are our microphones located? Okay? The man over there at the half, under the extra sign that has the microphone, another group at the marine over here with the microphone. And there is an opportunity here if you'd like to ask me a question. If you'd rather not ask a question in public forum, if you want to ask me a question privately, I will stick around, as I said. Mr. Wilson, my team, a number of other members of my staff are here to answer questions, and I'm happy to come up. Any favors on questions? Yeah, if you feel like pointing for it, you can ask it. Please go ahead, walk to a microphone if you would like to ask a question. So the first one of the mic is down here. We are on the fourth side of the area. Go ahead and we'll start on this side over here.
Good evening, sir. Gunnar Kersen, headquarters of the service battalion on Harris Island. First question I have is, you said that you removed all the tanks from the yards. My first question is, did you actually remove the tanks that were underneath the additions to the homes, the bonus rooms, the porches, the front porches and the back porches? Did we get to those tanks and then get all the fuels and oils in those tanks removed?
Yeah, thank you. Great question. So some of the houses here, obviously, over time, renovations and some additions done. So if an oil tank had been present in the ground and an addition, like a garage or a patio, was built over the top of where that tank was located, we've gone in and used the ground penetrating radar, or we've gone in and used metal detectors or the probes to confirm that the tank was removed before that addition was placed. So I think there's some misinformation going around that there's tanks located under houses because they were underneath the foundation or something like that. All 1,251 tanks have been removed, and we used ground penetrating radar, metal detectors, and the probes to go in and verify the locations that were underneath extensions, foundations, or structure of the house. Okay? Same thing with soil sample, water sample, and then, as I'm saying now, we're taking the additional step of vapor intrusion if there's indication that it might be wise to do so. And it's principally to ensure that if there was any dissonance in the soil, that the vapor wouldn't come into the house. Okay? How many questions do you have, by the way? How many questions do you have, by the way? Two? Okay, all right, I'll give you a five. And then we'll go to the center. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. The second question I have is results to the drinking water in the point of contact, or the area you drew the testing site from. In regards to, I know Lincoln Military Housing on the West Coast comes by quarterly and tests the water at house to house, and they send you the water results. My question is, is why doesn't AMC do the same thing? Also with that, if that's going to be, I know that the tap water from the sink may be, well, the testing site from the tap water from the sink may be more accurate due to the benzene and the chemicals being able to be more permeable through the pipes there at the house. So what area do you test from? Is it Jasper County, which is the water is okay, or is it the house, sir?
I don't have an answer for you on that because our water comes through Hoover, after sewer water flow, our A test the water, it's not me, it's testing the water vapor via the water test results for all of Hoover County. So I can't answer the question of what your testing site location is. I will tell you tonight, somebody must have called and asked EPA if they can test their water in their house. There's somebody called my house today, given you the results of the test, and say that the water is going to go, no performing products in the water. And that was from the tap.
Yes, sir. We did, and that kit runs about $250, so I know most military families can't afford that.
Okay. Your explanation?
Okay, I have two questions for you.
Okay, you got two, you get two.
Okay. My first question is, you stated that there were two families at first that came forward. Why do you state that there were two families that came forward at first in 2015?
That's the two families that I was contacting.
There were seven, mine being one of them. So I just want to know why there weren't tensions about the other families that were involved.
I'm sorry that I feel that if I didn't include you there, the two families that brought this topic to our attention, the two families that I've been communicating with. I don't have any names of any other family. I initiated a study so that the doctors can communicate, there's a medical element to that, there's a hip element which I should be a part of. So I'm not trying to limit your voice, your voices to hear, the study including that. There's no intent for me to exclude you. I just don't, I just don't know who you are.
Okay. Well, my name is Leah Furman. My associate is the one who is part of the investigation. I just want to know why he hasn't been invited or included in these meetings in the past meeting of 2016 and the meeting tonight.
Sir, I couldn't hear for a second. Who was included?
Dr. Felgen.
Dr. Felgen?
Yes.
Dr. Felgen was invited to the test tonight. She's a pediatrician, she's a pediatrician, and he got here tonight. It wasn't, it wasn't so he was included. Dr. Felgen was one of the individuals that was the initial of these families when this came out in 2015, and he was included at that point. She was a participant with the Navy Marine Corps Public Health Center. My purpose for this meeting was for me as the commander to speak to the families here. I sent your press release and I accepted your criticism, but the purpose tonight is for a commander to discuss with the family, and I initiated a study. That's my role, but the medical element of this is not my role. I've asked the special to keep going. Ma'am, I empathize and I feel the same. My first, I promise you, as I did two months ago, for the rest of my time with you, that if I'm given permission, I won't act. I want you to be very nice and honest. And trust me. And I wish, I wish I could carry that aim for you. I wish I could, if I could think of another.
Um, my question was in regards of, I know that on my street, I live on [BLEEP], and I noticed over the summertime, there was a beautiful car shaking up and hurt.
It's okay, it's all right. The bigger, the bigger this thing is. You want to take it or we'll go here and I'll take it. We'll come back. Yes? I promise you, we'll come back.
Well, Furman, I want to say thank you, Leah, for speaking out publicly on your own situation. We really all like really appreciate you stepping forward. So with that being said, I know that most of you, I heard the rumors, there's been 15 kids and about 20 adults that stepped forward. You said in 2015, there were two. You keep returning back to two. Tonight alone, we heard three that have been going on now for two years. So can you comment on the rumors of all these cases, like maybe not all of them have been reported or have directly contacted you, but of how many of those cases that are quote-unquote rumors going around have been, have somebody reached out to or have been documented as our, you know, world-based situation, location?
I will. Thank you for the question. It was a really good one. When I referred to the two families, what I was referring to is the two families that brought the topic to my attention. That's how I initially heard about it. They didn't reach out to me, but we heard that they had concerns, and we reached out to them. So when I say the two families, my main point is, for a little bit, the only reason I mention the two is those two families are the ones that brought it to my attention. When I initiated the study with the Navy Marine Corps Public Health Center, I turned that determination over to the health center because they have the medical specialist that can, that can look into the medical element that I shouldn't look into. I gave it to the Navy Marine Corps Public Health because I didn't want, as the commander, to make the determination. I'm looking for the experts to tell me if we had a connection between the concerns and world A. Now, I don't know, I don't have a number. I have, I'm using the number two because two people brought it to my attention, and I acted on their two concerns. I don't have a number of cases to give you, and I shouldn't give you a number. I turned, I turned the study over to the Navy Marine Corps Public Health Center so they can do an epidemiological look at this, a medical look at what families might be consideration here. And the other portion of this is the environmental portion, which is the data that I'm providing. So by no means am I suggesting to you a number at all. And the study has not come out to provide that number. Okay? So don't misconstrue numbers, and I'm not limiting it at all. I'm just using the two to indicate how I'm able to work with it. That's the only reason I said that. Yeah, I'm going to clarify your question so everybody can hear it here, and then be somewhat accurate in the study. Can I, can I give you my opinion of why we have, within this population here, a large number of cases of cancers? And in your question, you're already making the mental judgment that we have a large number for the population. And I don't, I don't have any reliable information that tells you that. I've asked, I've asked the Navy Marine Corps Public Health Studies to take a look at this. I don't know what the criteria is for the facility under that question, but the guys that are, the ones who do it are the ones that are looking at it. There's, there's a lot of comments on social media, on blogs, and other things, and people aren't necessarily qualified to make the judgment into whether or not people are included or not included. So I can't answer that question. That's one of those questions tonight where I'm telling you, I'm not going to have an answer. My opinion? I'm not the witness of giving opinions. I'm here, I want you to walk away tonight. As the commander of the air station, when I get reliable information, I'm going to make the right decision to protect the families. It's not going to be based on, I'm not going to hypothesize, I won't. Okay? I'm going to do the right thing. Whatever the study comes back with an answer. Sure. What do I think about the concerns or precautions, which you stated, that a fair assessment? Did I address that here? Okay. I hope, I hope my presence and role made with you as the communicator of my conference. I'm comfortable with it. I'll tell you that. The things that most value in your, value in your life, the things that are valuable to you in life. I'm afraid I don't crack, right? The things that are most valuable to you in life, the things that are valuable to you in life, there will be in world A. If I may inform you, if this turned, if your family were my family, I would act that. I'm comfortable living with my wife and I, we're here tonight, and our kids, they're home with me. If I thought for a second, is anything different, I would tell you. And I would tell you, if one of us asked my own family, I would blast them if they were here. Birthday napkin, if my felt there was a threat, and I felt there was a threat, I made the decision that I did. And it wasn't based on social media, it wasn't based on Facebook, it wasn't based on blogs, it was based on real information. That's what I could get from the people that knew what they're talking about. And when I determined it's time, I acted. And that's my promise, I'll be the same. I'm embarrassed, embarrassed if you're sounding quivering or something, but I'm concerned about it. Okay. I promise I come back and visit you.
Okay, I got it together now.
Dr. Furman, if you could just bring it to me.
Okay, so my question was, I just noticed over the summer, there was like a, some, a company, I don't know who they are, but they would come and they would drill in my yard. Like, they would come, maybe, I want to say I've seen them in my yard like three or four times over the summer, and is that what they were doing? Were they testing like, sort of, because they didn't knock on my door and tell me what they were doing or what they were there for? So were they checking the soils or?
Yeah, if, if, we didn't send you a letter or invite you, I don't think this related to this, it could be water man related, but if you give me a good address, I'll list up with Mr. Dave Wilson, we'll find out exactly.
Yeah, it's like my whole street, and I know a couple of other homes on base where people weren't informed, you don't really know what they were doing in the yard.
One of the reasons I suggested the last, and particularly the house that we were going to do, would be the same thing, to provide to the study here, was the way you know specifically that there wasn't a danger. specifically that there wasn't a [INAUDIBLE]. Can you elaborate on the name and the Royal Bay? And, uh, so, we'll get your address and I'll get you the specific answers to that question. I, I can't answer it here at the moment.
Okay. And, and you leave a [INAUDIBLE]. When we're done, when you come by, we'll get you a [INAUDIBLE].
Mr. Dave Wilson, okay, thank you for your questions. Thank you for waiting.
Um, I think she kind of answered my question a little bit there. Um, I think a lot of the families are kind of concerned about their house personally and maybe even whatever. Um, I know against certain areas, and actually contacted the control, I don't know, but it's, it's, it's helped. And, um, it's about five of them, and I get their killing process and all that stuff that they told me. Um, but I didn't know if it was him or someone directly, um, what our results were or if we could get tested.
Sure, um, if we, if we did some sampling through your house, um, you would get a, a hard copy of those results. So, if you have a question, you can, you can come and Dave Wilson, the point, not that, can he give you, tell you exactly, uh, what situation we're in.
I personally asked to request to be tested?
Would you test? Any, any tests?
Um, I know there's a control test that's ongoing, um, certain ones we can do, um, but I don't feel like to directly test it on our area. It's not my home, but I feel confident that...
Sure. Okay. Well, let's start with this. Um, let's start with talking to you about what your address is and what tests have been done here. And then we'll talk to you, uh, the future of that. Let's start with baseline of what we've done.
We all have this information, we can have some [INAUDIBLE].
We can, yep, uh, we can, Dave Wilson, if you wanna...
Yes, sir. One of the things, uh, please take note of the website address. Uh, one of the things that we will put up there, uh, very soon, is a list of all the addresses. And you'll be able to get your address, uh, see, uh, you know, the results of your tank pool, what we found when we did that soil sample. Um, for, uh, more than half the houses, when we took that soil sample, uh, there was no further action that we had to do. So, uh, you'll be able to see what happened, what the results were when we took the soil sample. You'll be able to see if we put, uh, the groundwater wells at your house. Uh, you'll be able to see the results of that, you know, if we have to go to the point of doing, uh, long-term monitoring at your house. Uh, you'll also be able to see, uh, the vapor intrusion testing. Uh, you could click on your house and it'll tell you, uh, what, uh, what results were for that vapor intrusion. If, if you had the vapor intrusion done, um, you know, a letter has already been sent to you, but that's still all gonna be captured on the website. So, you can go address by address and see exactly what the status is of your house.
Yeah, I'd like you to come down as I'm answering, Dr. Dave, and get your information and get your specifications, okay? But, uh, as I said at the start here, I want you to leave the comment. All right, that's all we're here.
Hi, um, first of all, I wanna thank you for being here. You seem really sympathetic to all of us and, uh, I think that helps a lot of us come forward. Um, I moved to Royal Bay this, just this time, uh, June vacation, um, in April with three of my children. And I was pregnant with twins at the time. My youngest of the three, um, started showing symptoms, um, about a month after we moved here. Um, we didn't know at the time that those were symptoms that correlate with having leukemia. We're just now getting around to getting tested and the tests are coming back, not so good. Um, we're in the process of giving them up to the U S D for more testing. We were never aware until today, someone knocked on my door and handed me a letter telling me what the levels were for my house. We were never aware of any of this. Um, and now, of course, we're very scared with two premature babies at home and one that is symptomatic. And are, are there any way that, like, we are able to leave? Um, because the current levels at our house, as of June of last year, were 2.2. I have a close family member that works for OSHA, and he writes with him, he does his, his specialty. And he says that people who work with benzene are only allowed to be, um, exposed to 0.1 ppm in an eight-hour period and they're not to exceed 40 hours per week. We're exposed to 2.2 ppm every day with small children. What do you have to offer us to get out of our house? The danger is much higher.
Yeah, is that quite true, as you're talking about here? So, I'd like you to talk with Mr. Wilson here, if you understand what are you talking about here. Let me go back to the first one here, for your, for your job. Are you getting, are you telling me about your [INAUDIBLE]?
It's been a while, um, uh, truly...
Sure, the sound that I do, to help you with making sure that...
Yes, and I, I'll talk to you about that if that's okay, um, 'cause we can work it out. But, uh, with our situation right now, we have five children at home who are, um, E F M P members, including myself, um, and we're trying to get E F M Ps, but to get that, we have to get diagnosed. With a rash that's undiagnosable for almost a year, allergy testing that are uncomplished, that they say there's no way it's allergies, it's not [INAUDIBLE], we try every [INAUDIBLE]. It's a rash like others that were diagnosed. And, um, this looks like our only diagnosis is that it's heading toward toddler age. In order to get with those specialists and get a referral from [INAUDIBLE], we are nothing to do, and I mean, and it's being very difficult. And in the meantime, the only thing that's in the back of our minds is to get diagnosed. And I just don't know if there's, I don't know if there's a way to get out of relief. I'm hoping for that, for sure, and somebody with authority would say, yes, you can break it down. Um, but at the same time, this is so sudden for us that we can't afford to gather, you know, most people can't afford to drop first month rent and a deposit and turn on electricity when the mother's at home as an E F M P member and then we're, and you're counting on the [INAUDIBLE].
Okay, number, number parts of your question, so, to break along here, you got a lot of ideas.
I have, I have, no, I have to get the following.
Was, uh, number both. So, first of all, um, I want you to talk to me, Mr. Wilson, is I wanna understand specifically which residents it was from. Number two, um, I think I'd like to help you with your [INAUDIBLE]. Because I think there's one that's, one that you think is associated with [INAUDIBLE]. Some of it is another, other than E F M P, right? So, let me, let me get to you, um, and one of my staff members will. My act show is up here, it's [INAUDIBLE] over. And we'll connect you with appropriate medical folks to be able to answer that. E F M P work for me and we can help with that. But I wanna make sure you're aware of your E F M P medical background. Number two, when we link up with Mr. Wilson here, if you understand where you're, where you live and which tests you're, you're talking to and what...
It's the letter that we received today. Um, the cover letter said that, um, for some reason, we were busy, we weren't given the letter, the, the original letter, um, they all went out in April. We did move here late April, but since then, we, they gave us, they gave us a different house. We moved in October. Um, I was hospitalized with, uh, [INAUDIBLE] and my husband knew that, so I was in the hospital. Um, so we [INAUDIBLE] like two years into a house and I was like, you know, what was going on?
Let me, let me have the school to talk to you, so I can get to your house.
Okay.
Again, my, um, my general question is, any members who are finding out that they have children or family members with symptoms that correlate with having, um, cancer, is there a way for them to get out? I know earlier you said, um, that, you know, for us to be acting regular list right now and we'll be mature, but is there a difference in really considering that premature? Or is there a way for them to feel better about where they live?
Absolutely, I think there's another topic here, the information I have that's, it's always going to be premature. But I've also told you that going into the, the [INAUDIBLE], that it's a oversight of other [INAUDIBLE] that asked a question. Your situation, I'm not sure if I would get a medical diagnosis of this. I hope they, they look at that, they look at your health and what's going on. Uh, as I seek to get to the answer from, from the [INAUDIBLE]. I wanna get it over. Close this, the moment, the moment of your comment, and I'll check it as I record and, and log that line on my page. I'll be, I'll be proceeding by [INAUDIBLE]. Okay, I finish you on that. I just need to know your name and where you're living. Okay? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Good evening. The tank removal and soil testing, vapor intrusion testing, if you've discussed my [INAUDIBLE] as a resident, is there any tank removals or soil testing or ongoing monitoring at the school site or the C D C or any community-based places on Royal Bay that just committed to residents?
Yeah, sure. All of the, uh, heating oil tanks that we're talking about are associated with a resident. So, all one thousand, 251 tanks are removed, the soil sampling is associated with you. So, the house, the houses are the area. You're good. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Yes, sir. Jesson Griffith from 251. Uh, it's kind of a two-part question. The first question I answered is, I know the main focus is these oil drums and everything around the house, so the house is being checked for any other nitrogen contaminants or anything like that that, that might associate with, specifically, the old air station housing. Uh, most Marines that are, that are in this room are probably young enough that they never lived over in the air station housing. My wife and I have received multiple letters saying, uh, when we lived there, oil, water, things like that. And, you know, even after we moved out, we would receive letters when we moved over to base housing about issues that they found with the old houses over in Pine Grove. Um, my daughter was diagnosed with a rare form of colon cancer, uh, early stages. And I don't think it has anything to do with the oil drums. But my question is, what other, what other options are we doing? Or what other steps are we taking to make sure that, yeah, this might not be the problem, but there are, might be other issues that are in the, are in the housing since there is a comminering around this?
That's a really good question. Thanks for asking. Uh, I, I talked a lot about the [INAUDIBLE] because, maybe, um, [INAUDIBLE] folks have [INAUDIBLE]. When I initiated the Navy Marine Corps Public Health Study, um, the study doesn't just look at, I'm looking for, um, any pathogen exposure in the house. So, you know, when, when we signed our lease, you know, we signed for [INAUDIBLE], we signed for, you know, asbestos, and everything, the [INAUDIBLE] and things like that. So, the study involved pathways for other potential exposures in Royal Bay. Off the top of my head, I don't know what all of, all of the [INAUDIBLE]. I assure you that we're not just going out, going out, we're looking to see if there's any pathway. Okay? Thanks very much. No, no, I have any questions?
Hi, uh, good evening. I have a few questions, and I didn't know this respect, but my first question was, would this have ever happened if the viral video had been marked? Would we have ever gotten a short answer, a sort of...
Um, yes, yes you would. As I said at the start here, um, what I don't wanna do is cause fear, unnecessary fear. So, I'll provide the information that I have reliable. When I came to our individual, our individual home with a, with a letter, we were gonna do some sampling in our home, it seemed formally, of the sampling that we're doing there. But I didn't have, I, I don't have any information that lays a concern to a cause any. So, I didn't, I don't have, I don't have the answer yet. I'm seeking the answer, and I'm taking, uh, the responsible actions to do it. But if I, if I have actual information, this may be further stated tonight. If I want to do that, I will act accordingly.
Um, my second question is, when things are completely, um, for people that have moved away and might have issues, are most people going to be [INAUDIBLE]? And so, how, they need to be on a mailing list? How do you need to care of our families? Because so many people have moved away and develop issues later.
Sure, there's a process for that and part of the, uh, study process here will inform us, whatever the results are of how to [INAUDIBLE] people and who needs appropriate [INAUDIBLE]. As I said at the start of this, I initiated this study and, uh, part of the process of the study is to tell me, uh, who are the populations. So, at, at the point where I have the actual information, I will do it and I'll, I'll communicate to the people that should know. I promise you that as well.
Gee, sir, um, sorry again, I'm, uh, I've been here, I've been a resident of, uh, Royal Bay since 2011. Um, I have a little girl that's five years old and a son that's 15 months old. Um, my question is, uh, April, I believe, of last year, we went to the community center on Royal Bay and you said there, they actually told us there were 34 more tanks in the ground. My house was one of them. Every house that I've lived in Royal Bay has had a tank. Our first one was [BLEEP] and it was taken out while we were there. Then, we moved, uh, I was on an appointment, we moved back [BLEEP]. And then they ended up tearing the house down, did all of that thing there as well. And then now we live on, well, we're moving now, but, uh, on, uh, [BLEEP]. There's a tank under the front porch. They actually did a drill and did the, uh, did the testing there. And we were told four, three or four times, 'cause I specifically asked, is there a tank underneath my house? And as of April of last year, they said, yes, there's a tank underneath the front porch of your house. So, my question is, if you say that all the tanks are out, is that, that true? And is that something we should worry about, that, that there are things, maybe we're not, they're not catching, that are underneath our house?
Sure, good. Thank you for your question. Number one, I'm telling you, 1,000, 2,000, 3,000, 4,000, are moving. We're going to use the current [INAUDIBLE] available, and it's [INAUDIBLE]. So, the tanks might not be there. I don't know who was older in town, or who was the tank. Potentially a misunderstanding. Where there were forces in the house going over old tank locations. Particularly, we want to do some vapor testing, that we can make sure that, uh, the, um, whether they drown water or vapor, we come up to those locations and then they go over. So, I believe that that may be the case. But, uh, if you talk to us and tell us what your address is, I'll absolutely check that. But when I, I would come on here tonight and tell you, 1,000, 2,000, 3,000, 4,000, 5,000, I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that.
Aye, sir.
I want you to be confident, I'm telling you that. Uh, I don't know if the contractor there did it, didn't have all the information or they did their sample, but they don't have the rest of the patient about out there like, uh, 1,000, 2,000, 3,000, 4,000, 5,000.
Aye, sir, thank you, sir.
And I think, I, I want you to go away, uh, the rumor or uncertain...
Thank you, sir.
Hi, good evening. Sir, all due respect, uh, one of our houses was identified as, uh, having the oil locks was located inside the house, um, possibly [INAUDIBLE]. Uh, we were obviously told that there might be one to four oil boxes that could have been under the house, or still in the house to this day. And because of the length of the house, it's six years old, they couldn't drill the whole house. They'd have to smaller the house in order to get to the rest of the boxes to remove them. So, they did come in and, um, drill into our addition room, but they only drilled in one point. And it says in the letter that they supposed to drill eight of the soil base of safety points would be installed in [INAUDIBLE]. Uh, and that there was gonna be eight samples. There was only one sample, one little tiny point in the addition where, where they could reach because the records are filled in there and that it was in [INAUDIBLE]. So, what I'm asking for is scientific, imperative data, evidence to back up everything that we're being told, that our residents are safe from radon, um, the vapors, the air quality is, is fine by EPA standards, and also to have our water tested in our home. We know that's super [INAUDIBLE] water supply. They've done their testing, we see the results on their website. But we want our individual home tested to know that radon, if there is radon under the ground from any, any other point, the rest of the house that has not been tested, if there's other boxes that's still buried under the ground, because there was one or two boxes, um, that our tap water, our [INAUDIBLE] water that we drain, that we cook with, that we shower with, that we, uh, brush our teeth with, is, uh, safe from any of the carcinogenic benzene, for example, um, and not gonna cause any harm. Can you put that in writing for us? Can you have somebody test our water? Can you have somebody test for radon in our home and put it writing for us?
You understand that the water doesn't come from the ground? It's [INAUDIBLE] water, [INAUDIBLE] [INAUDIBLE]. It doesn't come from the groundwater?
But it comes into the P D C water... But it comes into the PVC water pipe, and under the ground, the, the radons are bending whenever it's, um, highly permeable for concrete and, of course, through plastics. So, it can leak into the water.
Okay. So let's, let's do this, I'll, I'll lay you up in, uh, Mr. Wilson's facility, we'll take a look at your residence. I want you to be confident in what I'm telling you about the tanks, and then I'll take a look at what tests have been done.
Okay. Can we have it in writing that we are, you know, free from carcinogenic in the home, and the water, and, and the air quality? Because none of this was disclosed to us in our lease. It's like asbestos, and lead paint, all that, that's disclosed. If this was disclosed to us, we would have been given the chance to decide, do we want to live in the older home, or one of the newer homes, you know, because of just taking this risk? I don't want to take a risk with my family.
We don't know we have a risk. I've initiated the study, it's a health, uh, uh, fifteen, we have a risk. I don't want you to feel like, because, uh, we're happy to sit down and look at your house, and give you, uh, give you access to the information you need from my experience.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So, like you?
Yes, sir. I want to, for, for, actually, for your building, uh, one of my questions for my family is, were you ready to get, and I always brought up with, um, mailing lists, that's one of the things I'm wondering, is how are you hoping to be able to stay in contact, so people can, uh, three places in like the first two years? And then after that, if there's any problems that come from this, or if the study comes, is there any way that I can get house insurance coverage for my daughter? If there happens to be that, and how would we go over, does anyone go bottom tribe? If we've had problems with them while we're in, or if they're when we're out, it's just going to be?
You're at like step 25, you know, and we're, we're back here, so we've initiated the study right now. I don't have any reliable information, but you take us from certain things, and after where you're going. We have records of 2011 in that house, so we do, uh, we have that information, if you want, and we need that information to contact you if there was, uh, results from the study that you did, but, you know, I, I, I promise you that, so. I know who you are, you're in my building, and, uh, I won't let you go. We'll, uh, we'll make sure you're connected. In terms of, uh, let's not lead to a study conclusion, and a need for tri-pairs, or any of those kinds of things, that we're, we're nowhere close to. We're, we're at the determination of whether or not we, we have, um, a link to a concern in where we live, and I will act, uh, with the information that I have in my possession. Okay. Can I answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I don't have, I don't have the answer that you want for step 25.
Um, it's been touched upon, just in one of the previous questions, um, things like either potential health risks in the house, like, uh, radon, or the lead paint, or asbestos, or whatever. One of my concerns is the, um, the air vents, and do you have anyone here, I know you personally probably won't be able to answer this question, but if anyone here that can say, how often are those vents cleaned? We often live in a, a very hot, humid climate, um, and things that get killed off here. And one of the things that was on the Facebook chat, uh, was about mold, um, and that was being a valid concern to mine in the air vent.
Yeah, thank you. Number one, the whole, the whole development is included, is I, is there a pathway for that? In terms of how often your vents are, are cleaned, uh, I've had that, um, Mr. Wilson's facility, I'm not quite sure if that's an AFFCC question, I'll just have to get a word, but that's a, based on office question. Either way, I'll take that, and, you know, I'll lay you up for a little. Are you going to do that right now, or am I?
Uh, yes, sir. Cleaning of, of vents, um, you know, the, there, there's a PM schedule, a preventive maintenance schedule for the, uh, HVAC, the, uh, air commission and heating system. I, I don't know if cleaning vents is part of that preventive maintenance schedule and plan, but we will check with AFFCC, uh, AFFCC are the ones that do the preventive maintenance, so, but we'll check with them and see if cleaning vents is part of that, uh, it's part of that whole, that preventive maintenance process.
It's just getting, it's mentioned online, and one of her, maybe, uh, you know, something to be concerned about. So, I just thought I'd break it here.
Uh, I, total agree.
Yeah, I'm not kind of, you know, I'm too, you know.
I don't think my, but, uh, I understand, total agree.
That's great.
Okay. Mr.?
Uh, I'm Sisi Allen, from the UK, from Scotland. Uh, we live over, uh, [BLEEP]. Uh, I noticed that a lot of the houses down, uh, Bob White have been demolished, um, and I also noticed that on the map out there, that a lot of those demolished houses have been the ones that have been tested. I didn't know if there was any link directly to that, why they've been demolished, and if there's going to be any kind of research management to them, or anything like that.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's one of the things that Mr. Wilson was talking about, um, for that location where we were going to rebuild housing, where, um, a public private venture intends to build houses, uh, we thought it pleased to go ahead and do test to make sure that there was a good place to build over. So, years ago now, we don't have the same questions that we're trying to answer right now. So, that area that, uh, along Bob White, those houses, those houses are up for demo, right? No, there's no, no link that the demo is part of a long-term plan, uh, for Laurel Bay. Forty-two homes are scheduled to be rebuilt, and we've got a agreement from the public private venture, forty-two new homes in that location. We're talking about the area here, the boat lane, or the boat lane, that's to be rebuilt there, and then there's another 87, uh, homes in Laurel Bay that are currently fenced off as part of the demo, and that will be a green area, uh, no rebuild of homes in there. That's the plan, and related to this, that's, that's part of the, uh, total Laurel Bay, um, public private venture plan. But thanks for that question, because I don't want you to, to go on wondering.
Hi, good evening. Um, I don't know about you, but since I came into this room, my anxiety levels are just like increasing. Um, and I just, just what that?
Increasing?
Increasing, yeah, and I'm sure I'm not the only one. Uh, and I just wanted to say, that's normal, and I just wanted to encourage everybody to continue to reach out for answers, but take care of yourself. The base has, Tri-Grand has tons of counselors throughout all three bases. There's INFLAC, there's community counselors. I'm a huge proponent for counseling, and I'm telling you, like, it helps with anxiety, and I'm sure we're all experiencing this type of feeling. So even though that can't fix whatever may or may not be happening, it can help out right now. So I would encourage everyone, reach out, make an appointment with your counselor, um, to help with this thing that we're dealing with.
Okay. Good to hear your question. Thank you.
Uh, yes, sir. I was wondering, um, I noticed you said something about a list back there.
Sorry, can you say it again?
There was a list, um, back there. I wasn't able to hear what it was, um, what the, what we were listed for, um, and also, um, have you found any evidence that, um, like, some houses have levels that have exceeded, like, um, like, you know, if it affects their health? And have any of the houses been found, in fact, to actually, um, be dangerous for us, again?
Okay. Um, I have, I have no area of concern right now, but we're, we're doing tests, we're continuing to test, and looking for any pathways. If, if I have an area of action, I will let you know after.
Do you, um, like, follow, um, that is suspected, or would we have to look up a list ourselves, and be like, okay, is my house over there, and just, you know, what do you?
So, if there's, if there's a sample that is taken that has, uh, an area of concern for your house, you're going to, um, going to let you know that. The studies, the total studies collectively will inform all of us, and I'm going to let everybody know, uh, the results of the study. That's what I'm looking for, in order to be able to make overall action. But if we're doing individual samples that you're resident, you're going to know that, and we'll let you know that. Can I answer your question?
Um, yeah, I was just worried, I'm, I'm not really, um, educated in any of, like, lessons for stuff like that, and I just wanted to make sure that there was, like, for sure that you know, that you know there is a possibility of houses falling.
Yeah. We're not, we're not going to give you the results of the sample, it's leaving to you, we're, we're going to give you some time to explain it to you, to know it.
Okay.
And as I said earlier, I'm not going to put a, a home, uh, as a, I won't put a, I won't do that.
Okay. And so this spec just comes from, um, their regular awareness that it could be a vulnerability?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I, I have that on the terms of families that, in terms of cancers, related to their time. That's, that's all I had, but we had a concern there, so we went out to get it. It's the responsible thing to be ready.
Thank you.
Yeah. If you have, if you have a symptom in your mouth, and you have a concern that's a thing, go to the doctor to get it checked.
Right.
The doctor, maybe they've got an infection, or they have a type of cold, that's, you hold it together, but right now, we had a concern panel, went out, we initiated the study to get specialists to help. I didn't make an arbitrary, um, judgment on that there. I need, I need the people who are in his name to tell me, so I can ask.
Thank you.
Mr.?
Hey, let, I, I'm just trying to figure out the timeline, so this is kind of confusing. Uh, what is the when, like, the results that Mr. Wilson has, those being published tonight, tomorrow, the next week, three months from now? Do we have any estimate on that?
Yeah, that's what makes me understand, which, which result, you're talking about the study.
Yeah, so I'm checking, and some results are already out, for when they dug up our tanks, 2003, 2011, those type of results, can we get those?
Sure. Yes, so number one, uh, study, overall study, I'll get this to your pointer, the overall maybe, we're all about the health, and the environment, and there's only two environments there, and we're going to, that's the meagre, uh, for, uh, tank removal, and the soil sampling, the water sampling, and the vapor testing, we have those type of results. If you go see Mr. Wilson, uh, when you're addressed there, he gives, he tells you all, uh, I want you to be.
Just, just right back there. That's right. We have re, the reams of information and, and spreadsheets, but right now, it's not in, in a readable form. Uh, so, we're taking that information, trying to make it, uh, again, in a readable form over the next couple of days, when we have it on the website. So you can go in there, look up your address, and it'll tell you, uh, we did a soil sample, here's your results of the soil sample. Uh, from that, did we need to do a water sample? If we did, here's the results of the water sample. Uh, from that, if we needed to do vapor intrusion testing, if we did it, here's your results. Uh, you know, if we didn't need to do it, we won't be in there, uh, if, if we need to do it, but it's on the next, uh, next phase, he'll tell you that. So, um, so you'll, I, I think what you're asking for will be available to everybody over the next, next couple of days, it's just we're trying to get it, uh, in a readable form that we could put on the website.
Thanks for your question. This man.
For all of the children and adults that have, so, pretty big households that have been Laurel Bay, who've got had cancer, including myself, um, should we even worry and freedom now, like, are you not testing yet, too, or?
We're, we're providing all the environmental data for all of Laurel Bay, so, the fact that I said that the underdog storage thing, uh, weren't associated with freedom now, all of our environmental data are all made included in the study. So, you're not being excluded.
If we live in a town, we, we'll also know results for any of that?
From the study, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, you are not exempt, or you're not excluded, that's probably a better term, because you're living in freedom now. Thank you. Okay, good. Mr.?
Hi, how are you? I live [BLEEP]. Now, he just, well, I'm just wondering, I think someone else asked the question, but I don't know if it was really answered, but with the tape removal, knowing that with the venting, um, possibility, uh, why weren't you notified, why wasn't he notified in the process of getting home and all that good stuff? Cause you're saying, I know you keep reiterating, like, if you find out, um, do let us know, but what if before that, you know, something's already happened, or, you know, why wasn't he notified prior to taking the pass with the venting's possibility?
Okay. Um, I don't know if I can answer that question, uh, some of that removal occurred, you know, well before my time, but I'm, I'm initiating a study here to get some answers. If there is a reason for concern, I'm going to hack on it, so. Did I answer your question? I'm not, I'm not quite sure I'm understanding.
Oh, well, I mean, I guess you answered it to the best, um, the best you can, but the thing, I was just wondering, because it's, it's not, um, social media, these are facts that I, just by looking on different websites, credible websites, knowing when the tape removal comes, that possibility of the venting, whatever, uh, I hate to, um, I think you said something about vapor, or whatever that is, but with that removal process, that comes along with it, so, you know, um, being notified that, that that was a possibility, other than having to find it out this way and out there, you know?
Sure. Yeah. I don't want you to take help from your experience. And we're looking to see if there's any exposure back there, which is why the soil sample is done, and tank, water sample is done, and then, uh, even a vapor intrusion, so that you can become, I don't want you to worry about it, uh, if there's an exposure, we're looking to see if there's any exposure. I can't answer that right now, but we're, we're looking to check, I want you to be careful. Okay. Mr.?
I was, uh, speaking to Jeff, I'm with you guys, my question's directed towards Mr. Wilson, actually, uh, and it's based around, quite separately, because the information's not readable. So, I want to answer now is to, looking at the boards outside, it seems all the proposed vapor testing is going to be in one area of Laurel Bay. I want to know why it's in that one area? Is this because the initial readings were particularly high in that area?
You know, the list that's out here. The information that's out in, in the hallway was from the, the last vapor intrusion sampling, uh, that we did. And the way that those houses were chosen had nothing to do with area, it's that, uh, those houses were the ones where we thought there was a tank under a portion of the house, whether it's an add-on room, a shed, uh, front porch, back porch, driveway, it was just where we thought there was a tank that we had not been able to get to for removal. So that, that's why those houses were selected. Um, it had, had nothing to do with a particular area, and if you looked at them out there, they're sort of scattered around, uh, around Laurel Bay.
Yeah, the, the scatters are, are set accessible, they all seem to be on one side of Laurel Bay. So, are you confirming that every house which you believe has a tank underneath the house is vapor testing on, or proposed vapor testing?
Sorry, I'd say again, I didn't, I didn't.
So are you confirming that every house which has a tank underneath, that you're all doing proposed vapor testing?
Uh, no, we're not going to do vapor testing on, on every house.
It seems to be on the far side of Laurel Bay, Ash Street onwards, that has those proposed vapor testing on your side. So that would suggest to me that most of the houses that size have tanks underneath them. So can you confirm specifically houses which have tanks underneath them or not?
We don't think there's any type of houses that have tanks underneath them.
So you have, that's, that's.
We thought there were tanks under those houses when we went out, uh, to do the testing of those tanks. Through ground penetrating radar, metal detectors, probes, all the things that Colonel Black has mentioned, uh, we could not locate those tanks, uh, so they, they weren't, um, they weren't there.
So is, is the front of that more specific?
No, it, it is specific to where those, those houses were picked, because, um, we thought there was a tank still under there. Uh, what we found with the, uh, the ground penetrating radar specifically, is that, uh, it indicated that the tank probably had been there, but it's no longer there.
Okay.
So, everything out there has already been done, that's not projected, or not planned, uh, testing, that's all completed testing. And we have, the, the next phase that we're going to do is all based on what we're talking about, the, the groundwater sampling that we did.
Yep.
And we, we'll look at the results of that groundwater sampling, and if it reached the threshold that is recommended by the Environmental Protection Agency, if it, if the groundwater had a contamination level that reached that level, that's the ones that we're doing the next, uh, step of vapor intrusion testing on.
Okay. So that would suggest to me, my theory in progress, the groundwater levels are So that would suggest to me, my street in Laurel Bay, the groundwater levels are unacceptable? What you just told me that would suggest that where I live, and that's by Laurel Bay, the groundwater levels would be acceptable? Can you confirm they're unacceptable?
No, I can't. It's not, it's not something you can judge by area, and you're going...
I don't know if it's anything by area, but it just so happens that the majority of the houses with proposed vapor testing, so the ones that haven't been carried out yet, we're looking to carry out. They all seem to be one side of Laurel Bay.
Uh, no, that's...
So post this meeting, can I take you outside and show you the board?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll just race you after.
Okay.
So, Mr. Wilson afterwards? This man.
Good evening, sir. My name is Daniel Ness, I live on [BLEEP]. My family and I have been back here for three years now. We have two little boys, one three, and we're going to spend one year while being here. My concern is, as I'm sure as anybody else, I know you have a lot of weight on your shoulders, you have the weight of all of us on your shoulders, and I just think that, I really do. But as a resident, how come I was not notified of the ongoing investigations whenever I was doing? I understand there's had no concrete facts, but knowing that there was an investigation going on for potential hazardous substances, I felt like myself as a resident should have been notified. So if I felt like it was hazardous to my family in any way, or I didn't feel comfortable with the situation, I could have found housing elsewhere. I have two little boys, one and three, they're playing in the dirt daily, and at one, sometimes they eat the dirt. So, you know, it's not, if that's the case, there's no need for that to be judged.
Particularly dirt, and it's okay for it to be dirt. When my wife and I were pregnant with our first child, my brother and sister-in-law were on their third child, and we were out camping, and one of their kids was just putting mouth holes in there, and I was horrified. I don't do that, and they were like, only tourists in Mumbai can deal with it. So they're gonna be alright, and it's okay, alright? They're gonna be alright. I take your critique, why did you know about the study? The first question I thought of everybody, my statement is, I didn't wanna cause anxiety or concern for you without information, without reliable information. I had a concern by my family, related to where they were living, initiated a study determining that, but I didn't have anything in which to give you an answer. So I didn't wanna cause you concern. I take your critique, but I've been notifying folks since I went along with the process here, and I had something actionable to notify them. We're gonna provide data, I'll do it some testing, but if they let you use that, I will otherwise. The other part of the study was, I had environmental data that was part of our normal process, and I provided it to the agency, and they didn't answer that. That's really what it came down to. So, now I'm gonna cause you anxiety, because I don't have, I don't have the answer in which to answer your real question is, is there a link to any concern? Are you living in Laurel Bay?
I just don't want to get put as a winner, made of some anxiety, for me as a mom, to know that, that I would have taken the best action I thought possible to make the decision to live on Laurel Bay, if that must be the case. Thank you for your time.
Sir, we're running on time now? We're actually behind over, so I don't know if you wanna take one more, kinda wait until bring the rest of it up after the fact?
Okay, sir, thank you. Got, are you a questioner, or are you one of my raised ears?
I have a question, sir.
Okay, alright, thanks, sir, I think we're, we're in close here.
Good evening, sir. Sergeant Johnson, I live here, I'm just a old man. My question is, I didn't really think of any concerns or anything like that until obviously being notified of the video, and they do some research. My question is, while all these investigations and all the testing are going on, is there anything possibly temporarily fixed for the Marines and the families out of Laurel Bay, where we could go possibly later on, like if it starts to get more serious, until it is all completed, so that we're not exposed to a major issue? Because right now, nobody knows that it's a major issue, which is worries me a little bit, just because I'm seeing that, I got three boys now. Is there anything as far as, you know, if it gets more serious, that we're gonna be able to move out immediately, or it'll be a long-term delay?
Number one, you're, I lost the first part of your question. Number one, we're looking for an answer to whether there's any path to kind of discern that we can, so I want you to be confident. The place that you should go, or that you can totally go, we're not at that point yet, but I think that's a pretty mature choice for an answer. What I did say is, if I have some actual information, I can indicate that there is a threat to our families. I don't have to worry anymore. We work on a forecast. Forecasts are volatile, they're getting closer in, they're getting kind of, it's vision-based, and there's a probability of a threat to our families. And if I get a lot of the means to tell you, there's a very good concern, I'm gonna act on it. I'm not gonna commit to what that action might be right now, because I don't know what the central concern could be. Study is to look at a broad spectrum of potential to rule out factors, so to tell you what actions that might be down the road, we're not at that point yet. But I'll make the right decision, and I'll do the right thing to hear from our families. Don't make me commit to a specificity that I just don't have. I'm looking into, talking to the agencies that have given the assets I need, or whatever the industry already is. I'm looking for the answers that they want. They had a concern, family, they linked that to Laurel Bay, there's really a standard to determine that? And I'm not predicting what this study will say. I just need actual information of which to act, of which to do right. Obviously, all of us desire to be a full player, or athlete, I certainly desire to be a lawyer, but not because I'm the commander, because that's good news for us and our families, right? Whatever is best for the health, as a manager, whatever the study indicates, I need to, I will be there. And I want you to leave here tonight, leave here tonight for one second. I want you to be confident in that. That's still my purpose, and I don't want you to have anxiety, I don't want you to worry, and try to give the baseline information of which to go home to that opinion. I don't want you to get your thoughts and your concerns off the surface of your head. I want you to get the information I have. I don't have all of your faith, but I have enough to be confident in where we are right now. I want you to be confident, and I will act in whatever response I can protect, I'm willing to act. We're gonna, I'll serve you, guide every student, guide every student in the community. I'll do my best to do, and that's my promise to you. Alright. Can you say your answer? Any last question?
Sorry, I have to say that.
Where are your boys coming from?
You might have just ten seconds. For the Brits, if you wouldn't mind, instead of waiting in here afterwards, we'll meet in the base chapel, you go out the front door, head, back door, just looks slightly left into Laurel Missburg, and the little chapel, we'll meet there after this is done. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, I, first of all, I want to thank you for your patience tonight. Thank you for taking time out of your busy schedules, for taking time away from your families to here tonight to have a conversation with me. Do you have a question?
All the families that have moved away from Laurel Bay that wants to know what happened tonight, how are they gonna keep, because I keep combat cameras here? So I was wondering, is this gonna be posted live? Because I had a couple of family back me that Facebook lives it, but the audio wasn't coming through, so I was wondering, are they gonna be able to find out the information that was presented here tonight?
Yeah, that's, that's why I wanted to say in the beginning here, is I had combat camera documents for us tonight, so I can provide it in other venues. And I didn't, I really didn't want you to worry about trying to use your phone, I was gonna do that for you, and get it out here. I gotta, I'm not ES6, I'll be honest with you, I'm not really good with, but I got guys that are, and so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask them to do that for me, okay? So my intent is to show, I got another one of these tomorrow night, so whether it's this one, or both, I gotta figure all that out, okay? Do you see your question? I don't know where I'm gonna put it yet. I'm recording it, documenting it, and then whether I put it on the website, that's what I gotta figure out. Is that the best place for you all to see it? Yeah, sure. I will communicate to you where I put it, because at the moment, I don't know what the best place is to do it. I need some input from my communicators to tell me where I can hang it. I can put it on the website with a link, that's an option here, but I'll communicate you through email, and let you know where to go see it. A, a, an email, or I'll put it on the website of where to go find it, or, I'm starting to talk into a realm I'm not really good with here. My intent is to record it, to be able to provide it in another venue, whether that's on our website. I need you guys to tell me what's the right place to put it. I'm getting myself into a hole here, I don't, I don't know, I didn't answer...
Sir, I can address that for you. So, ladies and gentlemen, I'm Captain Sharon Cusbar, I'm the police officer here. I served here a little bit ago, so I recognize some of the familiar faces. We will make this as successful as possible, so we will post the link as soon as available, we'll post it on Facebook, we'll post it on our website, we will send that out to all of the pros on base, so we will make sure that this is as successful as possible. And is that up to your question? Does that say I can answer your question? Okay. We will.
Thank you for that. I don't, I don't even know what a tweet is, so that's why I need a proper period of time. This man.
I just want to say that I was a military child. I lived in Tampashire, any time there was a problem, Allison took care of it. When the infestors, they removed all of that. Together, in all the years that I've lived in these houses, there's been kind of problems with it not being taken care of. When you go into a home in a town, they don't dare to use any of this, everything is okay. And if it isn't okay, they don't always stick to where military has always been taken care of. And it's not only the water that could have caused these problems, there's a lot of other things that tie in. A lot of these people are young. They don't know what is taking place before, that could have caused their children with their problems. It's, you know, they can't just blame it on the water here, the water in hand, or anywhere. It's gonna happen, but it happens out in town also. And those people aren't taken care of the way we are. You know, tests are very upsetting, but they have to stop and think, you know? They are being taken care of. You're doing the best you can, and put it forward, you're taking care of us, you've done all the testing, and it will take a long time to come up. Look at Tampashire, they're still, we're still getting letters from where we live and to see about things that took place there. So, it's not a number nine thing, and I just want them to stop and think, that you're doing all you can, and I thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
I just want, wanted to ask a quick statement. I feel like I'm going tonight to look for answers, and I feel like I'm not seeing any of that. All I seem to hear is that studies are beginning, there's no timeline, we have no information. I'm gonna walk out the door, depending on anything, all I'm gonna be aware of is, is a test going on. Can you give any information on preliminary results, indication results, timeframe, anything? Because currently, I'm just sitting with that.
Okay, number one, I don't know if it's really, don't have any preliminary results. So I can say that there's been, there's been no, I've asked a question, that do I need to, there's something actionable to do right now, that we need, where I need to do something with Laurel Bay, and I've received nothing back, nothing said right now, that there's an actionable, or I need to do something. There's no smoking, none, the fact that it's small, we're doing the, we're doing the study, we're doing the analysis, and the people that, that even look at all the data are the right people to look at the data. And I want to do the action. I'm letting you do your job, responding to testing, if there's requests for data that will help identify potential factors, but right now, there is no pathway that is gonna identify. So I might, I sit back in the beginning, I live in Laurel Bay, my family lives in Laurel Bay, I'm high in confidence, I want you to leave here with confidence. I told everyone, I don't have all the answers, I'm not gonna be able to answer the million-dollar question that we're all looking for. So I'm taking the steps, figuring the answers, to be able to do whatever it is in the case we need to do. So are there some specific questions you might have, that we could talk to, for your location, beyond, beyond the study results? That's, that's the piece here that is part of the anxiety, or what I want you to not be anxious about.
What the noise is, coming, we presented the board, excited. Mr. Wilson already admitted that the map is outdated, it doesn't show anything really what I need to know, it just shows what you've done. So projected areas for soil sampling has already been done, doesn't show where you're gonna do future samples, doesn't say where you're gonna do water sampling of the water table, doesn't tell me anything, just tell me what you've done. And that's all I keep kinda seeing and hearing, is what you've done, not what you're doing about it, where you're gonna do it. And like, real trip said earlier, it looks like it was clustered towards the back end of Laurel Bay, from like Laurel Bay and Irish Street and all these kind of places, looks like it's all in that area, not towards the forefront of Laurel Bay. And that's what we're concerned, is that I live in that area, and I don't really know what's going on, or what to expect.
Okay, let's, let's get you there, and we'll, we'll talk you through. Sound like you're on the school, my ability is probably here, so get you there in a bit.
I'm not military, I am a civilian, but my husband and son have contacted from the air station before 2009, and in 2009, the end of January, my husband got sick. It took us almost a year, several doctors, to find out he had multiple my lungs, so I know where these families are coming from. My husband has gone through five rounds of different chemo, he has had a stem cell transplant, he's had three cancers already, and he's now fighting the fourth one. And it was all because, and I'm not saying anything bad about it, because we like the word, but he does in dirge, because we put in underground utilities. He does in the dirge, him and my son, on all four bases. I'm not saying that maybe he's part of this problem, or his cancer comes from this problem, but you can't forget your contractors. We're Bupatomi. Y'all came into us, and we're glad, you can't. But y'all can't just keep it a family and not let the contractor that has helped y'all out, not let us know anything. How am I supposed to, if I hadn't heard on TV, did this appear tonight? I would never been here, we'd never known anything. never been here, we'd never know anything. So, I mean, you know, I, I feel these families, I know what they have gone through, I know what the rest of them are going, going to go through, and it's not fun not to seal up one there, that ruins their hair, and just becomes a baby again, whether they're two years old, or whether they're forty-seven years old.
Thank you. My baby sister's age two, and age two and a half, once at age two, a liquid brain tumor. Just two and a half, second, liquid brain tumor. I agree with that, so, you know, I'm, so, Matt, you're one, I've got to remember, personally straight, so, I told you, I'm dedicated to this, and I'm doing, I'm doing the actions that I need to do to determine, make clear where, what relations between a concern and our health areas, I'm going to, I'm going to get them out now. That's why I started to write quickly, and I'm very glad, but, I, I know the truth. Okay? Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thanks, thanks for taking time out of your schedule. I wish I had all the answers for you, that's all to upfront, I don't, I don't have all the answers, but I'm taking the actions that are necessary to get to the answers, the answers that will allow me to continue to take action, and I'm dedicated to them. I want you to leave here with some confidence tonight, I want you to be happy with your home, I want you to be comfortable with your home, I want you to know that I'm your neighbor, and I wouldn't be there if I didn't, if I didn't think you should be there. Understood? Is that clear? Okay, I think I've clearly answered the question about the video, but my Public Affairs Officer, I think, saved me, and the reason for recording it, that I just be able to share it, and get that word out. I'd like you to go to our website for your information, and I'll share information and I'll update it, if I have more information to get it out. If you have questions, I'd like you to call our line, or I'd like you to post them on our email address, that I can respond to them. I don't want you to go to the wrong places with your questions, if you go to the wrong places with your questions, it creates anxiety, and you don't get act, you don't get answers from people, you necessarily are the authorities on the topic. In terms of the study, I'm going to the people who are the authorities on the topic, so I get the information I need to make decisions. I want to thank the folks tonight that asked questions, that stood up, grabbed the microphone, and asked me what was on their hearts, and if you'd have additional questions, if you left the three by five card on the way out, we'll follow up on that. If you don't get a response tomorrow, it's just based on numbers, and, you know, the people that I, I have available to do it, we've got things going on in the air station in general, that are part of the daily operations of the air station, but I'll get you, we're shooting for twenty-four to forty-eight hours turnaround on our responses to you, as I'm able to do, okay? Okay, if anybody wants to talk to me one-on-one, or has a question, that we were going to get together individually, I'll stick around as long as you need me to be here. But beyond that, I don't want to hold you here, I promised you twenty-three was going to be our cutoff, and we're at that point right now. I want to thank our commanders who came out tonight, and for the spouses that are here, for the well-being of your Marines and families, and I'll just leave you with my final promise. When I have information, in any case, actions that I should take, I, I will absolutely take. Right now, no link between a concern and where we are, there's no pathway identified. If I figure that out, I will absolutely act on it, you got my promise. And I think I've thrown you tonight, and I'm serious about it. Okay, folks, thank you, have a great evening, please, God bless you.